...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll refer to the consent agenda items, need to approve the meeting agenda, the January financial summary fund balance statement, the minutes of the January 16th, 2020 regular meeting, the payment of monthly bills, approval of updated substitute teacher listings. Does anyone want to motion? Kenny makes the motion, I think. Michael seconds. Any discussion? Are there in favor? There is a five or six oh. Next we'll go into the, have the monthly board report.
Hello everyone and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of February. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during two minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the development of the sixth version of the Missouri School Improvement Program. MSIP, as it's known, is the state's accreditation and accountability system for our public schools. It has been in existence since 1990 and is revised every five years or so. The State Board of Education approved the standards for MSIP VI at its February meeting. MSBA Senior Director for Board Development Janet Tilly says it's important for school boards to be familiar with the standards and indicators included in MSIP VI.
The standards are going to be broader statements of what a board should do, broader statement of what a student should be able to do, what a district should be able to do. The indicators will give a more narrow focus and they will provide sort of those stair steps of here's what you need to be doing in order to meet this particular standard.
The State Board of Education sought input on the standards and indicators in MSIP VI, and Tilly says MSBA submitted extensive comments, especially on the issue of how the standards will be measured.
Some of our comments then went a little bit deeper and that we gave some suggestions to them of how they could rewrite some of the standards so that they were measurable with evidence or with a quantitative or qualitative kind of measure. And then some feedback also that included how you really define what is a success-ready student and a college and career-ready student.
The new MSIP VI standards will take effect in two years. Until that time, the current MSIP V standards remain in place to allow districts to continue to prepare students and transition to the new MSIP VI guidelines. There continues to be a lot of talk about the need to improve teacher salaries in Missouri. The minimum starting salary in our state is near the bottom of all states and the average teacher salary remains well below the national average. During his State of the State address, Governor Carson said teacher salaries in Missouri must be improved.
However, the solution cannot just be asked in the state to write a bigger check. We're going to ask school districts, school boards, and DESI to propose a better plan and a bold plan for our teachers. Being an educator today is not an easy job. By supporting them, we also support our children, their futures, and the future of our state.
The State Board of Education has been considering a plan to raise teacher salaries, but at a cost of up to $400 million. House Bill 1990 would raise minimum teacher salaries by $1,000 per year for seven consecutive years. MSBA continues to support salary and benefit levels that enable Missouri school districts to attract and retain high-quality teachers. There are several issues being considered in the current session of the General Assembly that are of great concern to MSBA and school board members throughout the state, including the expansion of charter schools beyond St. Louis and Kansas City, voucher and tax credit programs that would funnel taxpayer dollars to private schools, and a variety of property tax bills that have the potential to reduce the ability of school districts to generate local revenue. As the legislative session progresses, we will keep you updated on developments again this year through our Legislative Voice newsletter sent to members via email each Friday during the session, our Twitter feed with up-to-the-minute developments, through critical issue alerts, and periodic webinars. We urge you to stay in contact with your legislators during the session and communicate to them the impact legislation will have on your school district. The 2020 Early Childhood Education Program of the Year Award applications are open through March 31st. Districts submitting applications will be judged on effective practices and innovative solutions in early childhood education, and three statewide winners will be announced based on student enrollment. The winning school districts are required to produce a short video on their program that will be shown at this year's MSBA Annual Conference. The Early Childhood Education Program of the Year Award is sponsored by MSBA's foundation, Future Builders. Well, the best thing about MSBA's Annual Conference is you. Get your school team together and submit your presentation for a chance to present at this year's conference in Kansas City. More than 100 presentations by school districts are showcased at the conference and provide valuable information on successful programs. You can submit a proposal for a presentation at the 2020 Annual Conference through the MSBA website. The deadline for submitting a presentation proposal is March 31st. The Annual Conference this year is scheduled for September 24th through 27th in Kansas City. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
This month is February, every year is a month that we honor our Board of Education for their work. Just as a reminder to everybody, this is a thankless job, a free job, but they really make decisions, you guys really make decisions every, every month that are good for kids and you focus those decisions around what's right for kids. So we want to thank you. We have some cups on your table. MSBA sends that certificate to you as well. We just want to thank you for everything that you guys do, and we appreciate your time and commitment to the kids in Ava. So, thank you very much. We have a board picture unless you want to know. So. All right. Thank you.
Next, we'll go ahead and hear our principal and director reports, and we'll start with Dr. Hall.
Our Valentine Lunch Series continues tomorrow with third grade, and it'll wrap up next Friday with fourth grade. We've had a pretty good response, typically 65 to 75 visitors. It's just a good way to get families onto our campus and create some memory with their child.
Thank you. High school principal, Mrs. Nelson.
Okay, so I just want to give an update. Mrs. Swaddish secured a STEM grant back in the fall, and that has enabled us to implement Project Lead the Way classes in two of our science sixth grade and seventh grade. Those have now begun, and we've had a positive response from students. What that enables them to do is they use a computer-based resource along with teacher-led instruction that gives them the background knowledge of vocabulary they need, and then they participate in hands-on activities. So, we're thankful for that opportunity.
Mr. Dalton and I had a conversation with Mr. Kluganigan today, actually, after bus duty, and he was talking about, he was actually going home to take the online course, and was talking about how much he thinks it's benefiting his kids and him as well, so it was pretty neat.
And those teachers are putting in, it's Mrs. Stilling's sixth grade, Mr. Kluganigan's seventh grade, and they do, they put in a couple hours of online training and then they implement it in our classroom.
Thank you. High school principal, Dr. Nash.
At high school, we're looking at our master schedule for next year. We took a group of teachers to West Plains to look at their Project Lead the Way, and we're proud to announce that we're going to be offering a Project Lead the Way computer science course next year, and also a computer science coding course. In addition, we've been looking at adding a health sciences program. Ms. Brittany Davis is going to be teaching some classes for us here at Ava High School, and then we'll have some clinicals at the Heart of the Ozarks. So, we're thrilled to do this for our students and it's also beneficial to our community.
Thank you for parting my report, Dr. Nash.
Sorry.
Special Services Director, Mrs. Swafford.
Lacy Robertson's class this week participated in the Missouri Pre-Employment Transition Services statewide job shadowing month. They were able to tour some local businesses and to see what, what it looks like in the workforce and to help make that connection between classroom and future jobs. I'd like to say these local businesses that worked with her, Town and Country, Ava Springs, Copeland, and the city of Ava, the water treatment plant, so they, she said the students had a great time and they were very welcoming.
Thanks. Dr. Dahl.
All right, we bring that up. So we'll start with the spreadsheet we try to look at every month. It's the 20th, so we get our payment on the 20th from the state. And it may come out, we're not sure yet. Okay. All right, so if you look at February, we've talked all year about estimated, estimating enrollment, which we do every year, we already have for the last three years because we get weighted ADA out of our student attendance, how many, the number of free lunch students we have, and the number of special ed students we have. So, if you use that calculation, you get your weighted ADA. I felt pretty comfortable in January that we had settled out, so we did estimate, and so our first estimated payment on that weighted ADA was, is, was today. So that's line, you'll see the weighted ADA if you go over, it's 1416, it moved from 1398. And the SAT target has been creeping up all year. This is the, the highest it's going to go, so this, sorry, state adequacy target is $6,375 per weighted ADA. So then if you, and that's broken up by, take local effort, so the total due is a little over nine million, if you take on local effort, over, a little over three million equals the state funding of $5,965,000, which is up 506,000 over budget. If you're, we talk about this every month, I always budget low, and estimate expenditure's high, and we passed a deficit budget last June, so this really gets us to a break-even category. And then it comes in, in several different forms of payment. You get your basic formula payment, you get your classroom trust payment, you get your Proposition C payment. That's what makes up your, that's what makes up the majority of our dollars from the state. So we are in good shape, we are at that break-even mark, but sometimes we haven't hit that till May, so I'm pretty comfortable about where we are right now. We'll continue to watch our weighted ADA, and if I need to, if I need to drop that a little bit, I will. This depends on our student attendance and what that looks like as we go throughout the year. So, one thing that did change is the prior-year correction, that's always late. So what happens there is when student, when districts turn in their final enrollment numbers in June, they may not have been paid the amount that they should have, they didn't estimate ADA. So there is, that prior-year correction has been about $3,000, is the number it's been all year. That jumped this month significantly, but there is a, a bill currently working its way through the House and the Senate, a appropriations bill that will help make up those dollars. The state cannot, the state had more revenue than it could distribute last year for, for school districts. They cannot distribute more than what was budgeted, but they collected more than they budgeted for. So that appropriations bill will help disseminate those dollars that they collected last year for schools that they could not disseminate. Does that make sense? Okay. So, I'm, I'm pretty happy where we are at this point in time. So looking forward for the 2021 school year, just want to give you a little bit of information. I'd given you some information earlier that the state had requested $10 million additional funding for the foundation formula, and $50 million for transportation. So that's changed a little bit, and I just want to update you on that. So, eight and a half of that 10 million was for additional weighted ADA, so school districts growing. They would need additional dollars to fund the, the addition of growing districts. So they made a calculation error, and they admitted yesterday at our, at my commissioner's advisory council, they made a calculation error based on students that live on federal lands or military bases. So Nobnoster, Waynesville are the two big districts that have, that have bases, and those are, so military children, they made a calculation error, they double counted them, basically. So they don't need that eight and a half million, so they dropped that request, appropriations request. The other was a million and a half. There's a financial institution tax that kicked in as of January 1st that lowers the taxes on financial institutions, that was passed two years ago but kicked into effect January of 2020. DESI believed that that would be kicking in now, and they would need to budget for that shortfall. That actually will not, the collection on that will not take place until 2021, so they have dropped that request for appropriation as well. So we have, and the, on top of that, which I've talked to you about, the SAT for the next two years, we've talked about performance districts and how the SAT is calculated, that will not change for 20, for 2020, 21, or 2122, it's going to stay at 6375. So it will not move, so the only growth we'll see in foundation formula dollars is if we grow as a district, we have more students as a district. Okay? The only revenue we could see is if they do, and it seems like there's an appetite to do this, if they do increase transportation dollars. Currently, you know, we're, we're, the state woefully underfunds transportation to the tune of about 19%. They're supposed to fund it at 75%. I think the, the number is 200 million to fully fund the transportation formula. They would like to see if they can make that up over the next four years. So, we could see some additional dollars there. $50 million seems like a lot of money, and I understand that, but they appropriated $10 million more two years ago, and I think we saw right at $2,000. So we're not talking about an extensive amount to us, but it's still more than we're, we're currently getting, so. All right, that's kind of my financial, any questions with finances that I can answer for you? All right, Dr. Nash touched briefly on our CNA course, and we're going to talk in a second about health services, but we got to meet with a nursing home yesterday, Tanya Keppert, and Brandy Mullenax came over and met with several of us about that CNA course. We're excited about that. I think that gives, does a couple of different things. It really helps kids that are interested in healthcare see if they're truly interested in it in high school, so they don't pay a bunch of tuition to figure out they don't like it. But it also, if a kid really enjoys it and wants to go to nursing school, it gives them an employable skill while they're going to nursing school, they can be a CNA, whether that being a hospital, or nursing home, or home health, or many different areas. So we're excited about that. You know, when we hired Mrs. Davis a couple of years ago, we had that discussion during that interview process. We felt when the time was right, we would make that happen. The time is right now, because last year you guys approved Mrs. Wade to work part-time. She works part-time for Cox, our virtual clinic, and then she works for the district part-time this year. So we're looking at some, adjusting some hours and expanding some hours to help her cover, why, because we have to have somebody in the middle school nurse's office, obviously, when Mrs. Davis is gone for three hours a day, and we are lucky enough to have three great nurses that work really well together. So, Mrs. Wade is absolutely on, on board with expanding her service to the school district, so we appreciate that, so we're excited about that. Through our vocational meeting we had a couple weeks ago, yeah, probably, is that right? A couple weeks ago, Project Lead the Way, we're excited about moving forward with that. We started at the middle school and expanded that to the high school, so there's some exciting things happening, I think, in our district. Something you're going to see from me in the next month, we're, we're currently refining some costs on our capital projects list. We've identified several capital projects across the district, and we're refining, really to give you some hard numbers on what something like that will cost, and we'll have you prioritize those as we did last year. Last year we were lucky enough, you know, you might, we prioritized like one through 10, I think, and we were able to do all 10, we could fit them in the budget. We'll look at that same thing this year, but I really need to have some guidance from the board on, on what you think's important, and then we'll have some explanation on each one of those projects, so. Currently, I wanted to just touch base with MSBA. Currently, the minimum salary in the state of Missouri is $25,000. A teacher has to be paid $25,000 as a first-year teacher with a bachelor's degree. The goal is to get to $32,000 as a minimum, and they talked about that, what, over the next seven years? My concern about that is if we put $1,000 towards it over the next seven years, when we get to year seven, we're just still going to be way behind, because other, other states are, are doing that as well. So, we get, really get money from three different sources. We get it from federal revenue, which is a very small portion of, of our district budget. We have local revenue, we do have the, we do have a 275 levy, which is the lowest levy you can have in the state of Missouri, and then the majority of our funds come from state funding, so it's going to just be interesting to see how that unfolds, unfolds within the legislature, so. Three or 400 million is a lot of money. So, that's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dahl.
I just got a couple things I want to touch on. Talked a lot about the vocational meeting, what that's led to, and I talked about that for several months, seemed like leading up to that. There's some requirements, just some things we had to get done in that meeting, but really what we hoped for coming out of that was some feedback and input from the community on some programs, things received from our graduates. Shared a lot of data, doing a lot of job projections, making sure we're preparing kids for what's going to be available to them, what the options are once they graduate. So what we're really excited about, Dr. Dahl has touched on some of it, and Dr. Nash, we've got lots of conversations going, coming out of that meeting, just different things we're pursuing and investigating, that we think will be good for our students. You know, we talked about some of the STEM ideas. We suspected technology, that from our perspective, we knew that was something we, we felt like was going to be something we'd get some strong feedback on, and it was coming to that meeting. When we looked at the health services, we anticipated that being something, and it was. And you heard Dr. Dahl talk, but we're already running with that. I appreciate the work Dr. Nash has put in, just in a couple of days. We've had that conversation, and she's running with that. Trying to schedule a meeting for next week, just another partnership with the local business for, you know, potentially an opportunity for students to get some hands-on experience before they graduate and go to the workforce. Just a lot of good conversations have come out of that, and leads on some other opportunities for our kids. I'm going to touch just for a moment on MSIP VI. Presentation I do every fall at some point with all the graphs and charts and Dr. Dahl has sent me. You know, you hear we talk about academic achievement, you know, we talk about subgroup achievement, college and career readiness, attendance and graduation rate, that, that is what that's referring to. You know, that, that process is evaluated and reviewed, it's about every five years. So what they have, they, you're saying they, the state departments identified what that criteria is going to look like moving forward. Now, it will still be a couple more years, you'll, you'll see the same information, we'll still be talking about that same criteria. But what I see when I look through these standards, and I'm going to just hit the highlights, I know there's a ton of information here for me to read through, and I was glad to send it to you, but at this point we're not there yet. It really is expanding on some things that we're already doing, but oftentimes all we know if what gets measured is, is what gets done. So there's just going to be some other things that are being evaluated and measured for school districts. The categories, they've got stuff that leadership, it starts at the top, it's, there's even a place we're going to turn, all of us have completed all our required training every year, effective teaching and learning. What I like, you know, right now, basically all the emphasis is on our state assessments, you know, trying to consider some other ways to measure student progress, collaborative climate and culture that goes from within your buildings, in your community, parent involvement, those kinds of things will be included in this, database decision-making. It's not just with your curriculum and assessment, it's even in your budget and finance, there's some things that will be tracked there. Alignment of standards, curriculum and assessment, just very thorough measure of, of your learning standards and assessment program, and inequity in access, you heard we talk about some of it, such as making sure we don't have groups of students that, that aren't achieving the level that they should be relative to, to the rest of the student body. Some phrasing that I see there that I really like, it's success-ready students, for whatever that is that they're going to do when, when they leave us and, and leave high school, just making sure that we've got them prepared and ready. One of the things that came out of our meeting, it's not a new program, just making sure we're emphasizing that, is some of the job skills and people's skills that, that our students have to have, so that's something I know we've looked at and evaluated and make sure we're emphasizing, that's mentioned specifically in these new standards. We're going to measure our individual personal skills for our students, we're going to measure that to make sure we're training them to be successful, but we'll see more about that as, as we get closer to that time. That's all I got.
Thank you. We'll start with our action, discussion and action items, and the library media program we're doing.
So surveys were sent out to the libraries and then results compiled into reports, I'm just going to share some of those highlights. New to the libraries this year, they've replaced many books, fiction, nonfiction, graphic novels, especially because students have requested those. Middle school has a template for citing sources using the MLA style. They distributed that to all middle school teachers, and then she is also teaching that during the hour she has students, sixth grade students. Also, the high school, they no, no longer have access to the MORMET database, so they've purchased the EBSCO, and they've had positive results with that. Areas of strength in the elementary library, there's an increase in teachers using the library to support their curriculum. Ms. Bridget Lofton is available to help with checkouts while Mrs. Union is, have holding library classes, and then their book fair is also positive. Middle school, number of items available now total over 11,000 items. Genre labeling has increased the student interest because it makes it easier for them to find books that they are interested in. And then resources are also available in various formats that appeal to struggling and reluctant readers. Also, she has the Mark Twain Readers Program where she provides incentives for students to read those books, and that program is growing each year. High school has a large selection of fiction books, which she says is this section that most students check out of. Their genre of fiction is also easily accessible to students, and students and teachers are both using the EBSCO database that was purchased. Concerns across the libraries, they would like to see a district-style guide used to cite sources that is taught throughout all of the grade levels and not just middle school. They would like to update shelving and try to reconfigure the middle school library to add some additional space for more books. They are concerned about a considerable number of lost and damaged books for which the libraries do not receive compensation for, and they are trying to meet the demands of having digital materials and Missouri Learning Standard materials within their current budget. So recommendations they have made, they would like some accountability or a plan to be made for those lost and damaged items to where they are replaced. Additional shelving and upturned seating, and that's across all of the libraries. Elementary would like in addition a handicap accessible stairs on the west side of the elementary library, so when parents and grandparents are coming elementary library, so when parents and grandparents are coming from, they, I believe they come from the cafeteria during the book fair.
They do.
So that they're able to get into the library. And then, of course, review and increase the budget for all three libraries.
All right. Did a motion and vote to approve the library media program review as presented by Mrs. Nelson. Martin makes a motion, I have a second. Kenny seconds, any discussion? All those in favor, carry six oh. Next, our health services program review. All right, ladies.
Hello. I'm a broken elementary nurse. I know most of you, but there's a couple that I don't, so, hello. For our program review, our overall average was a four point six, which falls in the , I mean, the agree to the strongly agreeing range, so that's great. Our lowest one was the number four adequate funding, and that was a three point five. And according to the comments that the eighteen surveys that I did receive, mentioned was like budget money to update old equipment, things like that. I also feel like this year and this past year, with having Nurse Lindsay available, we've been able to do a lot more programs and get things for the students that are vision screenings and dental care, and that has allowed us a little extra time, freed up time in order to get that done. So that takes money, having another person, so we very much appreciate the budget money that enables Nurse Lindsay to do with us. I just mentioned that the budget money would go toward helping us keep up to date with the ever-changing healthcare field, that extra assistance from our third nurse, and we look forward to being able to provide extra care in the future and continue this with a program that they're going to initiate in the high school next year. So just asking for a few more hours for Nurse Lindsay. So we appreciate that very much. And they both have a little bit to touch on with these extra programs that we have recently done.
Hello, everybody. The Lions Club came on November thirteenth to perform a vision screening for our pre-K through first grade students. The camera that they use, it can detect a variety of vision issues that just a traditional eye chart cannot detect, such as astigmatism or gaze. Twenty-two of our students received referrals to the doctor, and we have heard a lot of positive feedback from our parents and grandparents. Let's see, many of those students that have been to the doctor, they now have glasses. And on February twenty-sixth, MSG will be coming to provide the same services to our students, grades two through eight. So we'll get more of a span of the kids, so.
And from December third to the twentieth and January tenth, the MoC Center was here providing dental care to students. They saw ninety-seven students and were able to provide care in the amount of forty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars. And then they were here during summer school as well in June, and they provided care in the amount of twenty thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars. And that was sixty-eight students.
Just touch base, you talked about classes. One of those revenue sources, when families can't afford it or are struggling to pay those expenses, is Care to Learn. So we've, I think we've provided five, around five sets of classes this year that I'm aware of. But, and MoC has been a great department for the medical side, Ozark Family Vision is good, they always get our kids in. I called for an appointment, and it's in April, but I guarantee if we call this week, we can get a kid in this week. That's just, that's what they do, they work, they work in it.
I know a parent that actually had one of the kids that didn't have any glasses, and they went to the doctor, missing that long story. They, they were very grateful, and they were glad they got him in because they could have had problems later on.
You know, kids don't know they have eye issues. So if they don't have an eye checkup, that, you know, that's just what they do, that's what they know. So anyway, pitch for Care to Learn real quick, that I didn't, I didn't do. So April eighteenth, we're going to be having a golf tournament to raise money for Care to Learn. We've done Battle of the Banks, we've done lots of different things, but we, you have to have money in order to be able to do these things. We get lots of referrals from nurses, whether it be for clothing, whether it be for shoes, whether it be for eyeglasses. So we're going to have a golf tournament on April eighteenth. There'll be more information to come about that, but there's stuff on our Facebook page now. Some of you own and operate businesses, and we may be hitting you up to be a whole sponsor. We'll talk about that later. But anyway, I think we've had great, I mean, we just started this gathering sponsors this week, and it has been really good. Our response has been really good. So we anticipate raising quite a bit of money, and if you're a golfer, you are welcome to play in it. If you just want to volunteer at it, it is April eighteenth on a Saturday, rain or shine.
Thank you. So I need a motion and vote to approve the health services program review. Kenny makes a motion, I have a second.
I'll see you.
Michael seconds, any discussion? All those in favor, carry six oh. Next is the school calendar of next year.
So number one factor impacting our school calendar for this year, there was some legislation from the state dictating that schools can't start before, for next year, it's August twenty-fourth. It's a number of weeks prior to.
It's fourteen days prior to labor day.
There you go. So for next year, for us, that's the twenty-fourth, which I think was frustrating for teachers. We implemented a calendar this year, there were some changes last year that you had to build in certain numbers of snow days. So we were able to establish a calendar for this school year, where we had a full week at Thanksgiving. We had a full two weeks at Christmas, a full week at spring break, and those days are protected. Now, we're still able to protect those days off that are scheduled as days off, they're still protected. Schedule's just condensed, you know, without moving your end date back into June sometime. So what you'll see on this, we're back to a more traditional, I believe, two days at Thanksgiving. No, I think it's the Wednesday before, don't let me, don't let me tell you wrong here. Yeah, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Thanksgiving. Similar break at Christmas as to what we're used to. We still have a protected spring break there in March, and then we would get out of school on May nineteenth. So our end date is not that much later than what we have this year.
But what you did do was you moved some of those PD days up front.
Yes, we did. So we've had the built-in PD days roughly one month, not exactly. So what we did with the condensed start day was put more of those days at the beginning before school starts.
Which is good.
And that's honestly, with all the required training that we have to get in, with those days at the start of the school year, we'll be able to complete our required training prior to school starting. So we hope, we think that that will work, given the restrictions that we've got to work under. Feedback for teachers, I mean, they recognize there's nothing for us to do on the start day. Consent has been pretty strong as far as how we arrange those PD days. So this is the calendar we proposed from that committee for twenty twenty-one.
I need a motion to approve the calendar, school calendar for next year. Michael makes a motion, I have a second. Mark seconds, any discussion? All those in favor, carries a six oh.
So last month, you received a whole packet of policy updates, two thousand nineteen C, which is a little odd because it's two thousand twenty, but we got it after the December board meeting. So we can obviously approve it in January because you hadn't had a chance to look at it. Almost every one of those is critical due to change in state law. So we have really no option if we're going to abide by state law. And actually, we've, we've already implemented some of them, one of is on the hiring process. We've always called references, we've always done that, but there's a specific policy in there that says you have to check with Desi, which is odd. When we, when we looked into it, all you have to do is look at the last place that, on Desi, you have to pull the teacher up, whoever you're looking at hiring, and you have to confirm where their last place was, and you have to call that person, you have to call that school, which we did anyway. I will tell you, other districts don't do that. We've had people hired from our district that we never heard anything from. So that's going to require them to do that. And they, some very specific questions that we have to ask, and that's fine. So I didn't see anything that alarmed me in the policy updates whatsoever. We sent those out to administrators, and they looked at those. Really, that was, really, it stemmed their questions, was that hiring process, but I would recommend that we adopt two thousand nineteen C policy update.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion, I have a second. Kenny seconds, any discussion? All those in favor, carries a six oh. That concludes our meeting agenda for tonight. Our next, our other board debate will be March nineteenth, twenty twenty, at six thirty in this room. Need a motion to adjourn? Michael makes a motion, I have a second. Kenny seconds, any discussion? All those in favor, carries a six oh.
Thank you.
He's coming to see you.